Good morning, everyone. Thank you. It's now 11:15 and as I mentioned earlier, the mayor and the deputy mayor are unable to attend, so at this point, we will look for the committee itself to appoint a chair, and I see Councillor Van Passen has a motion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Since we do a rotating schedule and Councillor Vary will be the next on the list, I would move that we appoint Councillor Vary to be the Chair pro tem.
Thank you. Seconder, Councillor Van Andrishe. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. Councillor Vary, you have the chair.
All right, thank you. So in a call to order, the Public Hearing Committee meeting for July 22nd, 2025. I would like to welcome all members and guests. I would like to remind everyone that our meetings are web-streamed and televised. Please ensure that your phones are on silent mode. For those attending virtually, please mute yourself when not speaking. When called upon to speak, please turn your camera on and unmute yourself. Staff in attendance, please use the Microsoft Teams raise hand feature to be called upon and to remove it after speaking. I now call the July 22nd, 2025 Public Hearing Committee to order, and we'll do a roll call, and as the clerk mentioned, Mayor Martin and Councillor Duthy send their regrets, and I understand Councillor Huffman is virtual. Is she there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, the sheet says you are, so you are.
I am.
Good. So, okay, so any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Any seeing none? We're going to do the approval of agenda and changes to the agenda. Counsel has the agenda before them. Any additional changes or additions to the agenda? Seeing none. May have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Councillor Van Andrishe, seconded by Councillor Michelli. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, very good. That motion is carried. Okay, so I will now officially open the public meeting, authorized to be held under the Municipal Act, the Planning Act, and County Policy. Please be advised that under the Ontario Planning Act, as amended by the province, only specified persons and public bodies as defined in the Planning Act may appeal a decision of Norfolk County to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Third parties or anyone who is not a specified person or public body do not have the right to appeal a decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, to preserve the ability to be a party to any appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal, third parties or general members of the public are required to make comments or provide written submissions. These meetings are to allow oral and written comments as input to decisions on specific development applications. And so we'll start with 4.1. I'll go through it to Kendall Wharton, Planner. Will you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Councillor Vary. So through the chair, this application seeks to rezone a portion of the subject lands to facilitate compliance with the official plan and the future development of the lands. The approval of the zoning bylaw amendments that would comply with the official plan land use designation and do not require any site-specific special provisions can be done through delegated authority by the Director of Planning or Designate. Sorry, just technical difficulties.
Okay.
The property is located at 4929 Highway 59 within the hamlet of Cortland. The site is approximately 34.37 hectares and contains a single detached dwelling, agricultural buildings, and a bunk house. The property is zoned agricultural but is designated both agricultural and urban residential under the official plan. The lands proposed to be rezoned are located within the urban residential designation. The application seeks to rezone the lands zoned agricultural within the urban residential designation to Hamlet Residential to facilitate compliance with the official plan and future development. A planning justification report and scoped soils analysis has been provided. Engineering has requested that the rezoning include a holding provision until engineering comments have been addressed. The lands are currently used for agriculture and will remain as used as a portion of the lands. The proposed rezoning will facilitate future development of the lands for housing. In conclusion, this proposal seeks to rezone a portion of the lands designated to urban residential from agricultural to hamlet residential. The staff recommends that report CDS 25015 be received for information, that any comments received be considered as part of the decision process, and that the decision for this application be made by the Director of Planning or Designate through delegated approval as per zoning bylaw 2022-106. Thank you.
Thanks, Kendall. Are there any questions of the committee on the report? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone else in chambers who wishes to speak to this report? Please. What? Good morning. Can you please turn on the microphone and state your name for the record?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'm Lori Mueller.
Samantha Jones.
Okay, so our only concern regarding...
Whoa, stop. Tell them where we live first.
We live, well, down the road at 4894 Highway 59.
South of the intersection.
Okay, so our only concern is with the land use change and possible residential being built is the amount of added people to the area. And our concern lays in, from our own experience, that intersection at Talbot and 59 is hazardous, okay? If you go into past records, you'll see there's been a lot of accidents there. With the amount of people that live there now, it's a very difficult intersection to get in and out of. The amount of traffic, especially in the summertime, is excessive, and with even more people living along that strip and utilizing the area, it's going to become even more hazardous. Now currently, we have two stop signs on Colonel Talbot, so the 59 traffic can run straight through. It's a 60-kilometer zone. Most traffic runs 80 to 90 kilometers. We have farm equipment and everything else that utilizes that intersection. They are slow at getting off Talbot and onto 59, and it's part of the reason it becomes dangerous. The angle of it is dangerous in the sense of the angle at which they cross. There is blind spots and stuff, and we would suggest that if you're going to put in, allow a residential, I don't know what size, nothing was specified, that maybe we look at some stoplights.
And maybe widening the road to accommodate for the extra traffic, because it's horrendous.
There's been numerous accidents there. There was a new house recently built on the corner. That's usually where the cars end up.
In the front yard.
In the front area of that place.
We've, on more than one occasion, had to go out and assist.
You know, so that is our concern, is the added traffic. It may cause a problem, a safety issue for people.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any question? One second, just in case there's questions. Any questions for the deputation? Okay, thank you. Oh, we got one. Councillor Van Andrishe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. That area in the past was designated that we knew there was going to be a hamlet zone and we wanted, when it was Norfolk County, Norfolk Township, my apologies. I understand your concerns at the corner there. It is difficult, and then the new house there
Yeah.
kind of baffles everybody. But at the end of the day, it's there. And our concern is development, of course, and to make sure that we have even more residents in our hamlets to make things move forward. So I take your concerns under advisement, that maybe looking at that intersection would be a good thing. So I thank you for bringing that up. I myself travel those roads all the time, and yeah, I understand when you're talking about farm equipment taking their time to go out there.
Yeah. We have no objection to
Right.
being made residential. We're just worried about the safety.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much.
And things do have to be expanded on that road, and it needs to be monitored. There's never any police monitoring the speed limits. Nothing. Like, they go across, past our house, doing 80 minimum, and I can guarantee it, and nobody's getting pulled over. There's a seniors home right the next property on the same side as where we live. Nobody adheres to those speed limits. Those traffic lights are very, very important.
You get that residential in there, I'd be worried about kids coming out onto the road from the residential area. I would be
Yeah.
so afraid. You get them slowed down, get a little set of traffic lights in, get it calmed down in there, I think we'd be all right.
Yeah, we're not against progress.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Okay, seeing none. I'll see, is there anyone on the line who wishes to speak to the report? Is there anybody? Nope. Okay, so the recommendation is... Oh, sorry, Councillor.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a few comments on this, that council's job is to sort of give direction, but I think sometimes we lack giving clear direction. And I am opposed to converting this entire block into a hamlet residential zoning. We have an active rail line that we've finally got there. We've talked about the need for more industrial land, so, you know, the large portion of the north end of this property that butts up to that active rail line, I don't want to see that changed into residential. I'd much rather that go get converted to industrial or even commercial zoning. Now, the southern portion, where it's already built up kind of area, you know, maybe that part would be a nice option there where the existing driveway goes in, put a road in there, fill in the whole backside with houses. So, you know, I'd rather that we sort of give staff the comment from council that we don't want to see that entire property converted, only a portion of it possibly to hamlet residential, and maybe adjust the application and convert the northern part of that parcel into an industrial zone and make use of the provincial highway intersection there and a rail line there, and let's get some business and some jobs to Norfolk County. So I'll leave council with those comments, but that's where I'd like to see this application going.
Thanks. So to clarify, Councillor, is that a motion, or is that just comments or how you want to proceed?
Well, we're not... I don't think we give motions at public hearings. We're just giving input, but if council sort of agreed, we could just sort of mention that to, if the rest of council, sorry, agreed with that sort of concept, we could give that direction to staff that we'd like to see that, but...
All right, so direction to staff. Is that what, is that the consensus that we want to do here? Okay.
Yes.
All right, so that's, thank you, Councillor, that's received there. So with that in mind... Oh, sorry, you have another one? Did you want to speak as well? Sorry? You have to step up to the mic, please? No? Hmm? Well, okay. Either way, you still got to go on the mic. Okay, yep.
Just to help clarify...
Just sorry, your name for the record, please?
Jeff Pretty, owner of the property.
Thank you.
Just to help clarify, I'm not asking for the whole property to be done. What I'm asking for is what was done back by regional municipality when it was done in the 80s. Half of my grandfather's farm in 1983 or 84, down the center, the first 600 and some odd feet, either six or 650, from 59 Highway over to where the tree line was, was rezoned in, but nothing was done. So what I'm asking for is just to have that half of the farm from 59 over halfway just put into what the official plan in Norfolk is now, just to put it as a hamlet. So if we do decide to sever some lots off of 59 Highway, it can be done. That's what we're asking for. I'm not asking to put the whole farm into residential, just the spot that's already zoned, well, the lines of the hamlet of Cortland. I just want it to match the official plan.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, Councillor Van Passen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wonder if staff could pull up the second page of the report where it's got the aerial photography map there?
Yeah. I think that the farm was split east-west, half and half, and what I'm suggesting, you'll see down at the bottom where all the houses are, and the driveway goes back to the existing residence. Maybe that can become a road, and then both sides of that road could be developed in one acre lot, says the hamlet designation, but the northern half of it should stay in or get converted into an industrial or a commercial zone, because you can see the rail access at the top. So, you know, if staff would consider that and the applicants would consider that, I think that would be a better option to do, so...
Okay, thank you, Councillor. Anyone else wish to speak? Do you have your hand... Yeah, Councillor Columbus.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we heard from the deputation that there's a safety issue described at that intersection. I just wonder if we could send that to the Community Safety Committee to have a look at that, being it's there without this development.
Great suggestion.
I don't know whose department that fits under, Mr. Kridlin or Mr. Grace or...
Through the chair, yeah, the Road Safety Committee falls under the public works realm, so we will take note of that and add it for a review for our team.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councillor Van Andrishe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. I can recognize what Councillor Van Passen is indicating, the north end, but if you look at the north end and the rail is there, I can concur. Can I ask staff, what is that, a roadway when we look at the division of the two parcels?
It's a municipal drain.
It's a municipal drain that runs through there?
Yes.
Okay, so naturally, those two pieces divide themselves. Right.
Yes.
That's right. Okay, so that is a municipal drain that runs through there. I can see and I visualize that off the 59 Highway, I would love to see an area where it's divided. I can understand your point about industrial. At the time, when that was done back when it was township, what we wanted to recognize at that particular time, that everything, we wanted industrial north of three. And bringing that down because of the rail line, I can understand your point, but the portion that I, where the hand is, that portion, I can see very nicely that that should be designated, that could be part and parcel of a lovely hamlet. And as far as the roadway that is in question down here at the intersection, I understand that as well, but I really think that we need development in Cortland. We need, we need it everywhere, as far as I'm concerned. But at the end of the day, I can understand that if the applicant would consider the north parcel as separate, that might be a consideration. But as far as I'm concerned, where the hand is in that big portion offsetting on the 59 Highway should be developed for subdivision or residential, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Councillor. Anybody else wish to add some comments here? Okay, so we have a rec... Oh, yep, Councillor.
I would be prepared to move the motion, but want to delete that last line about how it would be implemented through delegated authority. I'd like to see a different report come back, or the report come back to council.
Okay, so can we get that, Mr. Clerk, updated? Is that, are you going to update it on the screen or...
Yeah, we will.
Okay, okay, just making sure here. Thanks. Okay, so we have the amended, let's say, motion up on the screen. So we've got a mover in Councillor Van Passen. Is there a seconder? Councillor Columbus. Any debate? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you. So, moving on to 4.2, we have Josh Mueller. Will you please introduce the report?
Thank you. Through the chair to council committee. This, the subject property is located at 10 Highway 59 in Delhi. It is a proposed zoning and official plan amendment. The total area of the site is approximately 1.25 hectares, or three acres. It is located on Haughtree Road, and the subject lands are currently vacant. You can see the surrounding land uses on the screen. Whoops. The development proposal is to rezone the development lands from development zone and service commercial to urban residential four, and to amend the official plan to change the commercial part to residential. The proposal will allow for residential development on the subject lands. I said there's the official plan and the zoning map. A bunch of technical studies have been submitted. The technical comments are included in Attachment C, and before this, there is, there has been some public input, but this was the, some of it is included in the report. The next steps are, the subject, preliminary view, the subject lands are vacant. The next steps are, the subject preliminary view, the subject lands are vacant, and the proposed redevelopment would be serviced by extension of municipal... Existing municipal services. It is recommended that report CDS 25005 for development applications, ONPL 2025-555127 and ZNPL 2025-034 be received for information, and that any comments received as part of this be brought back to a future report to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh, are there any questions of the committee on the report? Okay, seeing none. Did anybody want to speak? Yep. Come up to the microphone, please. If you could state your name for the record and your... I should have mentioned this earlier and I forgot to, but you have five minutes, so I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is David Hines, I live at 41 Melody Drive, and good morning to everybody, councillors and standing chair there. My wife and I moved to Melody Drive in search of a neighborhood which is... Which is quiet. Last year I put in a pool. I have a seven-foot fence around that pool, which gives me total privacy. Behind our property is a cabinet building business, which is 96 feet away from our fence. I believe there is a 30-foot easement directly behind the property. That's what I learned when I purchased the property, so they couldn't build 30 feet behind my fence. I understand that the... That an out-of-town developer has made a request to change the zoning, commercial to residential. Sorry?
It's just somebody online, it's... Please continue.
From commercial to residential with the intent of building, from what I understand, and I'm not sure, two-story townhomes. That I have yet to determine. The information I'm getting is very sketchy. So they'll be directly behind my property. Also, understand the developer's made a request to change the easement from 30 feet to 10 feet, so that means my seven-foot fence will give me no privacy whatsoever, so I'll have a two-story townhouse, potentially, people looking out of the window or directly into my backyard, which I don't really want. If council approves the change of the easement, I would like to know the reasons behind that decision. I'm hoping that this council will abide by the present easement of 30 feet. Before any decision is made, I invite all involved councils, councillors, members to come to the Melody Drive and take a look at the property in question, and you would see how ridiculous it would be to cram a home in such a small area. Like, we don't want to be like Hamilton where you can shake somebody's hand next door. That's exactly what would happen. So, if you look at the distance between my fence and that thing is 96 feet, and then you take 30 feet off that, it's 69 feet, how do you build something with road access in that short distance? So, to me, that's just out and out ridiculous. Melody Drive is one of the nicest streets in Delhi, and by building so close would not only infringe on our privacy, but I'm sure that would affect the resale value of our property. I have spoken with most of our neighbors, and they agree with me on this subject. My neighbors could not be here today because they work, except for one gentleman here. So I'm here representing those people that couldn't make it. We would like to be kept informed on any and all decisions regarding this matter by email or letter. I gave Crystal a copy of this letter with my email and all my information on it, so I'm just hoping that the councillors do what is right, and by all means pop by and I'll show you exactly what it looks like. It's not a very, very wide spot there. That's about it, so thank you very much. Any questions?
Are there any questions at the deputation? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I went out of order here, but I was supposed to call the deputations before we went to the public comments, so sorry about that. I... We do have two deputations on this matter, so I'm going to call them now, and then we'll go back to comments afterwards if there's anyone else. So can I have Eldon Darbison, please, from Valley? Oh, we don't have Eldon today, we have Scott today. Well, I... No comment, I guess. Welcome, Scott. You have five minutes, as you know.
Perfect. So my name is Scott Palander, I'm a planner with J. Dogus Valley. We do have a presentation available here for the public meeting. So Peach Barn Estates is the application we're talking about, again, for an official plan and a zoning bylaw amendment. Next slide, please. Again, I think even says John on here, but Valley is the consulting planners for this application, and the applicant there as well for Aldershot Homes. Next slide. So the purpose... So the Norfolk planning staff did a great job of summarizing the application, so it's for a 25-unit detached residential condominium, vacant land. I'll get into the zoning and the official plan designation on later slides here, but you'll see the awkward sort of way the lands have been designated under the official plan when we get to some later slides. Next slide, please. So part of the application that was submitted was for... Included the site plan for the 25 units on the property. So you'll notice here, the intent is to have them as single detached units, it will be a condominium. We'll have to get through the form exactly of the condominium itself.
I'm so sorry, Scott, can I interrupt you just for one second here? I got a hand, sorry. Please, councillor Michelli.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Scott, I'm just going to wonder if staff could... You know, we've got the side slides and the other slide, if we can go to the full screen version, that will make everything more visible, please.
Okay, so we'll just give them a second, and then we'll get you back on, Scott. Well, now we have nothing.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I can just advise, if we go to slideshow and yes, then we'll be able to do it from there. From beginning. Thank you.
Beautiful. Okay, thank you councillor Michelli, please, Scott, continue.
Great, just one slide back there, just with the site plan. So we've got the site plan up that shows the 25-unit condominium. The intent here is for those units to be about 1,000 square feet, single-story, detached for the purposes of the bylaw, but again, it would be a condominium with, you know, intent is freehold essentially, units in there. We've done... Requested some variances from the bylaw, and I will get into that later as well, but what we're looking at is, and if you see across the northern end of the property there, the units that back on to the Melody Drive properties, well, requests have been made for reductions in some of the yard provisions. We need to step out of the planning-ness of what we're looking at and look at the actual site plan as well, and you can see those units have been provided with a minimum, I believe it's 5.4-meter backyards, which is, you know, from a unit perspective versus the bylaw perspective, you know, it's that same backyard amenity space that are provided with most developments in Norfolk County, and then if you look in a lot of other municipalities, is probably far more than included in there. So, while there are some site-specific provisions for yard reductions, again, step out of the planning-ness and look at the site, and the units themselves will be provided with, you know, more than adequate amenity space. The front yard in front of the unit does have sufficient parking with the driveway, and we'll have the two parking in the garage as well. On the eastern side, there are some units that will have sort of those reduced amenity space, but again, these units are intended to be single-story, 1,000 square feet, intended for seniors, where, you know, some reduction amenity space and maintenance is probably a very good thing for some of those people in the older age groups. So that's where the target for this developer and the applicant is going, is to target that senior's market. Next slide, please. So this shows the existing extent of the zone and the designation. You can see on the southern units there that where it is in the commercial zone, that extent of that commercial designation is quite peculiar. It doesn't really follow an established property line or an established use, so that's really where the request for the official plan amendment comes in. There are mapping errors, I'm not sure if it is a mapping error, but what I can say is that normally designations do follow a road, a property line, something, but that's not the case in this situation. The property is primarily designated for residential purposes, which the applicant is looking to move forward with. Next slide, please. So again, just some high-level renderings of what some of those units would look like. Again, 1,000 square feet, single-story, that reduced amenity space to help with seniors with any mobility issues, and then obviously maintenance as well. Next slide. So these are the proposed zoning bylaw amendment requests that are built into the actual zone provision itself. We are working with staff to have that bylaw updated prior to it coming back for a decision meeting. I won't go through them individually, but you can see here is that's where, you know, I was talking about earlier about the planning specific term, but we need to step out of that and look at the actual site plan with relation to the units.
One minute.
We got one minute, all right. We'll go to the next slide, please. So again, as planning staff indicated, we've submitted a number of supporting studies to help ensure that it's a well-designed, safe development to move forward with. Next slide, please. So again, a planning justification report was submitted as part of the application, reviewed provincial policy, Norfolk County official plan, the bylaw. Detailed design will be... Take place at the site plan stage, so again, that's where we'll get into the more nitty-gritties of the actual site design itself. We are obviously only here speaking about the zoning bylaw amendment itself. Next slide. And I can answer any questions that the committee may have.
Thanks very much, Scott. Is there any question... Are there any questions of... Yep, councillor Columbus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I noticed that the application, the front page there that staff put together is actually... This is in Ward 3, not Ward 2, just to clarify that.
Thank you.
And some questions with respect to... I've had some calls about garbage, snow removal, the fencing, road width, sidewalks. Will that be coming later?
So specifically, all those questions, yes, those will all be... All be reviewed at the detailed site plan process.
The one confusion a lot of people had was they didn't realize it was 25 single-story units, they thought it was two-story, as mentioned in the deputation, which was a concern to many, but one of the real concerns I have here is the fact that this land is service commercial, and I looked hard to try to find a location for vacant service commercial property like this. So I don't know if our planning staff has considered that, because there's not... There's very little place for Delhi commercial to expand. I don't know if you've looked at that or not, but it has been mentioned by the business community, so they are concerned about the fact that if somebody wanted to put a larger building in place somewhere like grocery store, second grocery store, they would not be able to find land to do it in that particular urban core area. I guess you've answered my questions because you're saying the rest of us come in later, then. This intersection here is very busy, it's provincial highway 3 and provincial highway 24... Or 3 and 59, so it's a very busy intersection, and if anything, it perhaps should stay commercial rather than residential, because we do have... I counted them up, there's like 1,200 residential building units been proposed already for Delhi, and there's probably more coming. So we do have adequate amount of residential unit development, thanks.
Thank you councillor.
Mr. Chair, can I address any of those?
Please, yeah, please.
So, if we go back a couple slides to the slide that shows the designation and the zoning, the challenge with this property is that awkward split zoning and designation on it. If you were to build any sort of commercial use, you would run into bylaw issues when you're looking to try to implement that, whatever use, your commercial use. That's where, again, I spoke to... Normally, a zone or a designation will follow something that is, you know, hard and fast on a map, a property line, a road, a railway line. It is just somewhere divided down this property. Almost 80% of this property is zoned and designated for residential purposes, so to call this a commercial property, I guess that would be sort of debatable on, you know, was this ever intended for commercial use with the almost arbitrary location of that designation zone line?
Thank you, and just one thing I need to clear it up is, it looked like there was possibly an entrance coming onto Highway 3 rather than Haatree Road to 59 Highway. Why is there not an entrance off Highway 3 versus... Or Talbot Road, Highway 3 versus the Haatree?
Through the chair, that was denied by the MTO. They've restricted access onto the provincial highway, as they do have jurisdiction over that.
Thank you councillor. Any more... Oh, yeah, councillor Van Passen.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question at the end of this, but, see, I'm not an expert on economic development and planning and all of that, but I find it hard to believe that there could be a better location for a commercial zoning than the intersection of two provincial highways, and I agree with councillor Columbus's comments, and the question, how bad are you going to be if we, you know, sort of sent you back and say, no, you can't have this, but if you wanted to get the zoning fixed and then zone the entire block into commercial, we'd be more than happy to look at that and, you know, build a commercial unit, maybe a second floor with apartments on top, but this ain't going to happen kind of concept? I know you've already done a bunch of work and studies on it, but I just cannot support this sort of concept, so how do we politely send the agent back to... Come back with a different concept that we might be able to be persuaded to support, so...
Okay, I see Mr. Valley's going to...
No, the applicant. He will be coming to speak to us.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of council, I know you don't know me, so I'll start by telling you, my name is Gabriel Gasparini, and in fact, I do live in Simcoe at 294 Union Street, right beside the new high school addition or elementary school addition, whatever it is that's happening. I've been here for seven years, I love the community, and I really have no intention of doing anything that's going to destroy it or cause problems for the people who live It's funny that you say, would you consider doing a commercial development? Because yes, I would. I'm not an unreasonable person. I looked at this property, and I was told that the official plan has designated the land as urban residential, so I tried to follow the documents that were given to me. It was never an intention to try and cause problems or for this council or the people who live here. Perhaps I should have said to begin with, I am a developer and I have done these projects in other communities. I have done seniors' projects before in other communities very successfully. I've been a successful developer in Branford for over 35 years, but that doesn't mean that this project has to be a seniors' condominium development. I have nothing against grocery stores. I have nothing against a general neighborhood commercial or maybe bigger, I guess, for a grocery store. I don't know, you know, what your planners would decide, but I do have the problem that the MTO won't allow me to have access onto Highway 3 or 59. So how do I create a commercial designation when the only access I'm permitted is onto Haatree Road? I certainly thought that 25... At least in any other city I've been in, 25 houses on three acres is considered very reasonable. I know that for Norfolk, it seems like I'm cramming a lot of stuff in, but I'll be honest with you, when you're looking at eight units per acre, this is considered low density of the rest of Ontario. considered low density in the rest of Ontario. So what I'm saying is, and most seniors don't drive much to begin with, the traffic that would be going out onto Haughtree Road is not that impactful. I'm not against commercial development. If the town in some way can say to me, yes, sir, you can get access onto Highway 3, you can have an alternative access onto Highway 59, I'd love to work with you.
Okay.
But I can only do what I'm allowed to do. I'm standing here today saying, I'm not allowed to have access onto Highway 3 or Highway 59. That's why I'm proposing a very modest development onto Haughtree Road.
Okay. Thank you very much for the comments. So for today, we're just getting, of course, getting comments and things for staff to come back with the report, so we're probably not, well, we're not, we're definitely not going to be making decisions today.
I realize that.
So, okay, so thank you very much for that. Do we have any other questions for the application? Okay. Is, okay, so that's great. Thanks very much, Scott. Appreciate it. We have a second deputation. So Mark, welcome. Five minutes. I'll let you know when you have one minute left, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, council, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Mark Spence. I've learned a little bit here this morning, and so I'm going to read my prepared text, and it requires some updates, but let me tell you where I was coming from. Thank you for the opportunity to present my comments and questions on the application by G. Douglas Valley Limited for the property with a civic address of 10 Highway 59 in Delhi, Ontario. I own a home that is adjacent to the subject property. I also own a business in Delhi, and so my submission is from the perspective of homeowner and business owner. First off, let me be clear that I'm very much in favor of all manner of development in Delhi. We need a thriving and growing business community to provide goods and services to our residents, and those businesses need customers and employees, and ideally, many would be from those same local residents. I would oppose rezoning of the subject lands from Development D Zone and Service Commercial Zone to Urban Residential Type 4 Zone R4 on the basis that Delhi already has ample areas zoned for residential development and very little areas zoned for future commercial use. If Norfolk County accepts the proposal and does rezone the subject lands to Urban Residential Type 4 Zone R4, then I have several observations and suggestions for Norfolk County to review as part of the consideration of the proposed development. One, it appears that the proposed development is really three townhouse blocks. We know that's different, despite the site plan, which appears to depict 25 separate dwellings. There are some practical challenges with this design. A, each unit has a small area that I might call a backyard, and the building is pretty close to the property line, and I believe that standard distance from the building to the lot line is requested to be reduced. I'm not sure why this reduction would be approved. B, there does not appear to be a common walkway across the backyards. That area, if it's grass, will be difficult to maintain since any cutting equipment will need to be carried through the living area. And C, I would hope that there is never a serious fire, but if there is, I contend that it might be very difficult for the fire department due to the very long buildings and only a couple of places to bring a fire hose to the rear of the structure. And I suppose there might be lawn furniture and other personal items to contend with in the backyard areas. Item two, I note that each unit includes a garage to park one vehicle and a space to park a second on a driveway. It seems likely to me that the driveways are too short, and some vehicles will be parked and extend onto the roadway. The driveways may fit an average vehicle, but averages are just that. Some people own longer vehicles. Three, I would suggest that consideration be given to limit or prohibit on-street parking to allow traffic by service vehicles of trades, deliveries by couriers, access for garbage collection, and access for fire, police, ambulance, and snow removal vehicles. This is a higher-density development, and careful consideration is warranted. Number four, access for vehicles is proposed to be via Haughtree Road. I think this is a mistake. It will present an awkward intersection with Haughtree Road, which is within just a few meters of the intersection of Haughtree Road and Highway 59 and the intersection of Haughtree Road and Melody Drive. I would suggest that access would be far better served by Talbot Road, Highway 3. Consider, if you will, that most homeowners now need two incomes to afford the purchase of a home. That probably means two cars and therefore likely 50 cars will enter and exit this development most days.
One minute.
Attachment C, technical comments. The staff report notes, quote, "County policy pertaining to sidewalks states sidewalks will be constructed on one or both sides of all roadways and new subdivisions and redevelopment opportunities in accordance with Norfolk County design criteria," end quote. I don't see why this development should be excused from this goal. Walkable communities are better communities. And finally, item six, I read with interest that the chain-link fence at the rear of my property is to be removed, as well as the chain-link fence on another property. What is the reasoning? What'll it be replaced with? Who will maintain it? That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right on time. Any questions to the deputation from council? Yeah, Counselor Van Adrichi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. My concern is, you've heard from the owner developer that he cannot get access via 3 or via 59. Does that change your opinion any? Because if we're talking about to be able to put, say, industrial, commercial in that area, and you can't get the access through those roads, what are your thoughts on that? Being a business owner as well?
Thank you for your question, Mr. Chair. I think that more effort should be extended to opening up that access. I don't know what the process is to appeal to the MTO, but I have concerns about the access via Haughtree Road, just because it will be confusing and people will be wondering who goes first. That's bad enough in most four-way intersections, so commercial or residential, I think the access should be off 3.
But if you cannot get it, do you not note that this would be a hindrance to this developer if it's commercial and you can't have access to main arteries such as those two highways? And then all you have is Haughtree Road, that it's difficult as a business to be that, to end up that way?
Thank you, Counselor Van Adrichi. Mr. Chair, my view is that, yes, it's more difficult to have a commercial operation with access off Haughtree Road. So I'm sympathetic to the developer.
Okay. And recognizing the proposal here is basically 1,000-square-foot units, is that more conducive to seniors? Do you not agree that that would become better affordable than what the average house price would be?
Thank you, Counselor Van Adrichi. Mr. Chair, I do agree that smaller square foot is the pathway to producing affordable housing. I think the intention to make it targeted for seniors is honorable, but the free market will dictate who lives there. And I think that the density, to me, I'm not a developer, seems high, and I worry about the ability of service vehicles to navigate that area. But I do agree with the idea of a 900-foot square-foot house.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Any other questions to the deputation? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I jumped ahead to the second deputation. I should have called for a motion to accept the first one. So can I get a motion to accept the first one for information? Counselor Michele, Counselor Columbus, any, there's no debate. All in favor? Okay, and then can I get another similar motion, please, to accept the second one? Counselor Brunton, seconded by Counselor Van Passen, all in favor? Thank you very much. Are you opposed? No, no, those are just to accept the deputation. We're going to call for any other speakers now. So is there anyone else in chamber who wishes to speak to this report? Oh, yeah. State your name for the record, please, sir.
Mr. John Valley.
Oh, okay. Five minutes, John. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to do a little follow-up to some of the things we've heard from some of the deputations. The map that you see on the screen is, in one way, a little bit misleading. What you see there, the yellow, is the area that is currently designated residential in your official plan. The pink is commercial, but there's a corner of the property, actually underneath the words "pink" or underneath "commercial OP," that's a different property. That's not part of our application. So we're not proposing to change the entire pink area to residential. That piece, that existing commercial site that's on the corner today, that's separate ownership. We don't own that. We're not applying to change that. So a commercial use would be maintained there. There's been a lot of talk about access to Highway 3. We've done a traffic report. There's no way the MTO is going to allow access there. We're simply too close to the existing intersection. They've made that extremely clear. I think the neighbors would not be happy at all if we proposed a commercial development in the yellow area that had a commercial development with access off Haughtree Road. I think that that would be very problematic and would receive a lot of concern from the neighbors. We have talked about access to grass-cutting area. We actually proposed to staff that we were going to have these common access areas through the condominium to facilitate access to the rear yards. That's one of the reasons we're doing singles instead of townhouses. Fire access all meets the county standards. That'll all be reviewed at the site plan. Driveway and parking all meets your bylaw requirements. Our spaces are actually a little bit bigger than you need. Visitor parking, again, all meets the bylaw. It'll be addressed at site plan. We keep hearing high-density. This is not a high-density development. This is very low-density at eight units per hectare. Sidewalks, fence removal, again, these are all site plan things that we're not really here to talk about. We're here to talk about the zoning bylaw that's before you. But I think it's important for council to realize that most of this site is already designated residential in your official plan. We understand that there's a small piece of that pink area that we're proposing to convert from commercial into residential, but the majority of that pink area that shows on that map on your screen is not part of this application. We don't own it, and it's not, we're not proposing to change that. So I think it would be very difficult to get a commercial development on this site that would be acceptable to the neighbors, especially from a traffic entrance perspective. If there's anything else that council has, questions, I'd be pleased to address those.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in chambers today? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak to the application? Okay, and seeing none, is there someone who wishes to move the staff recommendation? Counselor Van Passen? You'd like to speak as well? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to moving that. This, again, public hearing, listen to the comments. I hope that the applicant, appreciate that Mr. Gasparini came out, and I know he is a well-established developer around the community and is willing to look at all options. I hope they would consider my comments as part of the public meeting that, you know, let's, I will say, it's not the first time we've had the minister, it wouldn't be the first time to get the Minister of Transportation to Delhi to look at a problem that got quickly resolved when he actually, the boss had his feet on the ground and looked at something. So maybe we can work on talking to the MTO about fixing that entire intersection once and for all and get it accessible for commercial operation at the same time. So I would move the recommendation, and hopefully the applicant can see if they were willing to adjust their application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Second, or Counselor Van Adrichi. Any discussion? I'm going to call the vote, then. All those in favor? Nobody opposed? Thank you very much. So we're going to carry right along to 4.3. We have Fabian Sarah as our planner. Will you introduce the report, please, Fabian? Oh, I see Bowden. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to the rest of council. Just a few words before I turn it over to Fabian. There have been some changes to this proposal. Since the agenda went out last week, the package you originally received contained a few errors and omissions. We sincerely apologize for that. And Fabian will walk you through some of the changes in the newly revised proposal that you're about to see.
Thank you, Bowden. Fabian, take it away.
Thank you, and good morning. I've prepared the following information report for you. So this application is for a draft plan and subdivision redline amendment and for a zoning bylaw amendment at the northeast corner of Croton Avenue and Dalton Road for a draft plan and subdivision, also known as the Gardens of Delhi in Delhi, Norfolk County. So site characteristics, this application was submitted by Agent G. Douglas Valley on behalf of the property owners. The site as a whole measures in roughly 36 acres. The lands are currently vacant and have been an agricultural farm field roughly since the 1960s. So this project was recently approved via council in 2023 for a draft plan and subdivision and zoning. And due to changes in ownership, there was a slight realignment of the draft plan and subdivision, a redline amendment to the corresponding draft plan and subdivision conditions, and as well as a rezoning application, we find ourselves here today. So currently, the lands are designated urban residential in the Norfolk County official plan, as seen there on the plan mapping. And the purpose of the redline for the draft plan and subdivision amendment is proposing to redline amend the conditions for street alignment, as well as to amend the proposed lot depth, the unit counts, and to remove two park blocks, also known as parkettes. Sorry, I'm just going to proceed to the next slide here. So in terms of the unit count amendment, the total unit count is being reduced from 368 units to 366 units. The Table 1 in the report provides an outline of the types and amount of unit counts that are changing. For the zoning bylaw amendment, the primary purpose is to rezone the two parts within the draft plan and subdivision, specifically Part 5 and 6 respectfully, from open space zone to urban residential R1B for Part 5, and from open space to urban residential R4 for Part 6. The Part 5 will also have an amended special provision, 1045, and updates are in regards to amended minimum lot area for a corner lot from 340 square meters down to 320 square meters for an overall reduction of 20 square meters. And the Part 6 would go from open space to urban residential type 4 with amended special provision, so 14.1045 is being replaced with 1098. And the updates for the amended special provision are to amend the minimum lot area for a corner lot, as well as corner lot frontage of 9.2 meters and exterior side yard of 2 meters. Part 2 special provision was amended by adding a new special provision, 14.97, to amend the minimum lot area as well. And for the reduction, which was, sorry, the corner lot area was reduced from 225 square meters down to 210 square meters for a reduction of roughly 20 square meters there, as well as to add additional verbiage regarding daylighting and site triangles. Technical updates are also provided in regards to verbiage and the definition of a dual-frontage townhouse. This was seen as necessary to eliminate confusion down the road when applying for permits and when reviews are being conducted. So another element was to amend the rear yard setback provision, the building height, and to amend the zoning on the daylight and sighting triangle. For this application, staff did not receive any public comments in advance of the public hearing. Technical comments have been attached in Attachment C, and any comments heard today from the public or members of council will be considered. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have as well, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Great, thank you, Fabian. Are there any questions of committee on the report? Counselor Columbus?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I wonder if the planner can outline what a dual-frontage townhouse is? Or have you got a photo? is, or have you got a photo? I've never heard much about that term previously.
So, the easiest, essentially, the challenge is to provide a photo. I'm happy to do so, unless Mr. Valley has any that are available handy offhand. Essentially, the concept is that there's a frontage available on both the front, like the street side, as well as a frontage available on the rear side of the property as well. So, it's, like, theoretically, the face or the traditional front of the property is meant to be traditionally used as a pedestrian access, whereas the vehicles would tend to come in from the rear side, at the back, if you will.
So, is there parking at the front and at the back, or just?
Typically, parking is provided at the rear.
Okay, thanks. And the second question, there was some, in the report, it mentioned parkland dedication.
Correct.
We're going to need more parkland dedication. Can you explain that?
Correct. So, for this application, through the draft plan and subdivision that was provided in 2023, there was more parkland that was actually provided. So, through the subdivision process, there was two lots. It'll be beneficial if I can share the presentation again, actually. So, previously, the portion that's identified as Part 5 and the portion that's identified as Part 6 below, so Part 5 is a, it's essentially being rezoned from an open space. It was initially intended to be a parquet, but staff have determined that that's something that's not desirable, not only for the municipality, but also for this development as a whole. The park that's currently being provided as a part of Part 4 at the north side there, that measures in at 5% of the entire parkland dedication requirement. So, the elimination of these two parquet lands will not impact the 5% requirement. And so, this kind of provides them the flexibility to also provide more houses, as well as provide a different layout, as well as a more conducive layout for their entire schematic plan as it's an entirety.
Thank you, Fabian.
No problem.
Very good. Any other, yeah, Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, am I okay to ask questions on all the technical comments that are provided to us at the start of the meeting? Is that?
Sure.
Is that?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry, I tried to breeze through them, but I mean, it was put on our desk just prior to...
Still, yes.
Okay. I'm on 23 in the engineering comments, and I'll, this is the first I've seen such detailed information on all the comments, but I'm glad Mr. Valley's here, because I'm looking at Item 23 on the engineering comments, and it says 442 cubic meters a day for water and 143 cubic meters for wastewater. That seems low. Am I, can I ask that question to Mr. Valley? Is that okay? Or?
Yeah, you can. Sure, ask him.
John, is that, can I?
Come on up.
I have a couple of other questions, too, John, so you might as well step to the podium.
Andrew's not going to like me, but those numbers came from staff, and we were questioning why they were so low, and we were questioning why there's such a big difference between sanitary and water. But Mr. Lambert assured us that that was a methodology that the county was using for allocation purposes. So, I'm not, I'm not sure how they came up with those numbers. We're happy that it says in the conditions of draft plan approval that we have servicing allocation for the, for the entire subdivision. So, that's, as it were. But I can't tell you how those numbers were calculated. They did not come from our office.
Can I just jump in here? Darnell's on the line, so we're going to throw that to him?
Yeah, I can go on with the, because it affects the phasing, too. I'm not clear on the phasing, so, if I may.
Okay, let's, okay, so, let's ask John all the questions, and whatever John throws back, does well have Darnell answer. Is that fair enough?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, and so, those figures, though, are applicable to the entire subdivision, John?
I believe so, but that, Darnell can confirm that for you.
Even though it's phased over up until, what, 19, or 20, 2034? Correct?
Yeah, so, we have provided the county, and Fabian probably has that mapping at his disposal. We provided the county with a phasing plan for the development, which goes through, I believe, four phases. So, they're all defined what the phasing will be. There's conditions in the draft plan and subdivision for timelines for when those have to be registered in order to preserve the draft plan approval. And there are conditions in there which talk about substantial performance, so that not only do you have to register a plan by a certain date, but you also have to have a certain number of the units occupied in order to keep your draft plan approval alive. So, yes, Fabian's got the phasing plan up there now. So, you can see that Phase 1 is the blue area, which includes the park and the stormwater block. And then Phase 2 is up at the top in yellow, and then 3 and 4 are the pink and the green. So, that has all been set out by the county as part of our approval process.
Okay. I have other, a few other questions, but maybe Darnell can tell me how they arrived at those two figures?
Sure. Darnell, good, thanks, John. Can you get the mic there, John, before you leave? Thank you. Darnell, if you're with us, could you help out with some answers here, please?
If I may, Darnell, I just want, like, what cubic liters per day or per, per capita are you using for those two figures? Like, the one seems awful low for wastewater, but obviously you put...
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the counselor. These numbers have their origin from our ongoing monitoring program. We look at a three-year average for consumption within the Delhi area and the three-year average for sort of wastewater output in the Delhi area. And I agree with you, those numbers are vastly different, but the model shows us that the consumption of water in the Delhi area is high. It has a max day per capita demand rate of almost 600 liters per person per day, I believe it is, which is quite high compared to other community service functions. For example, Waterford would be half of that. But certainly, on the wastewater side, it is the more reasonable number, just below 200 cubic meters per day or per person. So, happy to look back at it, but these numbers actually derive their origin from actual consumption and demand data from those various areas.
From Delhi, but it's, it may not be applicable to other areas in the county, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. The other questions I have is this front-ending cost, and I'm not sure who can answer that, but it says in the report here, and if you go through, "front-ending agreements," and it shows a substantial amount of reimbursable works should these things take place over the phasing. And I have two questions on that. One is, can somebody explain to me how development charges, and I know we haven't completed that yet, but how that might impact this? I'm a little uncertain as to, I'm looking at it from the developer's point of view. How is he going to recover his costs up until maybe 2034?
Is that maybe for Heidi? Or Darnell also? Sorry. Darnell?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I will take a crack at this one to the counselor's question. There's the clause that was inserted into this development agreement, and I believe it reads as a "may" clause, "may enter into a front-ending agreement for items that the developer may be asked to forward that would be of benefit to the existing area and not necessarily attributed to the development itself." That clause was put in there to facilitate the extension of Main Street of Delhi, and I think it's Crozier Road along the side, where those roads are planned to be extended, and there's a developer contribution, and there's the potential to add the existing area benefit into the Development Charges Act. The development charges is under review right now at Norfolk County, and I believe the intention is to bring forward a new bylaw, ideally by the end of the year, and it may actually include some works around subdivisions like this one that provide a benefit to the existing area beyond that of simply the development. And therefore, those conditions were put in there to allow that to happen, should that be amenable to council.
Okay, and you said that the front-ending agreement may be, happen or take place by the developer, so he may not agree to a lot of the front-ending charges. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, back to the counselor. Yes, any front-ending agreement would be, need to be brought back to council for ratification and approval in any event. When it comes to development charge projects, you know, the county has two options. One, the county could undertake the works and be funded through development charges and tax levy as it would any other normal project. The other is to allow a developer to front-end those works and have it performed in advance, but such agreements would have to come back before council for ratification in any event, and the developer would need to agree to the terms, as would council as a whole.
So, if there's a substantial carrying cost to the developer here, I assume he will ask for some form of compensation going forward. Is that a safe to ask, safe to look at? That'll come in an agreement? Would council see that also, that's what you've indicated, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, back to the counselor. Yeah, that is a common term that's negotiated through any front-ending agreement. Typically, there is an advantage to the developer to front-ending the works, typically because they carry a proportion of the works that is of a benefit to them. Time would factor into any item of carrying cost for it, but commonly, that is not a matter that would play into it, if I just wanted to be quite frank, based on some of the front-ending agreements that I'm used to. We try to keep that time window very short to when the payback would be to negate that.
Okay, my last question, if I may, and maybe you're the one to answer this. A week ago, you said that if it's condominium, that the condominium corporation looks after the stormwater pond. In this case, there's no condominium, so the county's going to get, and I read the post, two-year development clause and so forth, but the county's going to get stuck with maintaining the pond, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the counselor. Yes, that's fairly common for a typical residential subdivision, non-condominium, that the pond, along with the park and the roads, end up being transferred to the county for care and maintenance into perpetuity.
Okay, I certainly don't agree with the maintenance of the pond long-term, and I just don't see the difference between condominium or a pond that's benefiting strictly a development of this type, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Does anyone wish to move the staff recommendation? Oh, sorry. You're not on my list. Oh, did I not call? I said, did anyone else want to speak? I asked if anybody wanted to speak. Please go. Don't be shy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am the applicant's agent here. I don't really have a formal presentation, but I just want to clarify to council. We were here about a year and a half ago getting a draft plan approval on this property, and you remember at the time, I was throwing up a whole bunch of red flags because we came and got a zoning approval, and I said we should be doing the zoning and the subdivision at the same time. That didn't happen. There was, that created some challenges here, and basically, a lot of what we're trying to do today is clean up some of those challenges that have come across. One of the things the counselor pointed out was asking about these dual-frontage townhouses. At the time, there was a different land developer involved other than the owner. The owner of the land has remained the same, but there was another developer in the wings who was proposing these dual-frontage townhouses. What council approved at the time was a dual-frontage townhouse where the front door of that unit would face the external street, so in this case Dalton Road or Croton. That would be the front door, and the garage would be on the, on the internal street to the subdivision. And what council approved was a zero-meter setback to that garage door. So, when you're walking down the street and the sidewalk, the garage door would be right at the sidewalk. There would be no grass between, no driveway, no grass, no nothing between that sidewalk and the garage door. When that developer who was proposing that exited the scene, the current owners, "We don't like that. We don't want that," and that has facilitated this zoning change and this redline, because we needed to make those lots deeper so that we could have a driveway and set those garages back six meters, which is what's in front of you today. So, this is what has brought us back here a year and a half, roughly. I don't know the exact dates. A year and a half after the original approval is to basically to clean this stuff up and do what our client, the landowner, believes is a better development for Norfolk County. So, I'm encouraging the council not to get stuck in the technical weeds here. We're looking at this as a cleanup of what was done a year and a half ago, an improvement. We've had great success working with Mr. Lambert and sorting out draft plan conditions and all those kinds of things. I don't want to get into the technical weeds here either, because I do see this as almost a bit of a housekeeping exercise at this stage, but I am happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Counselor Columbus?
Mr. Valley, you mentioned technical weeds and gave me, jarred my memory, because this is a 36-acre site with 380, 368 homes proposed, right? And the field is full of weeds. Do you have any idea when we can see some Phase 1 activity here on this property? It's too bad it wasn't put into agricultural use.
So, unfortunately, we spent the last year and a half trying to figure out how to get back to this meeting and get these conditions fixed. It's taken that long. So, I know our developer is anxious to get going and to move forward. He needed to get this redline done. He needed to get these draft plan conditions fixed. But, yeah, he would like to move. Obviously, the housing market is not very great right now, but I do believe he's someone that would be willing and interested in, you know, moving forward now with, we can't, we can't even start engineering design until we have this redline approved by council today, because that changes the road pattern, which changes the engineering design. So, you know, I would expect that he would want to move forward and bring a first phase to market as soon as he believes there's a market to sell some homes.
Thank you, Mr. Valley.
Thank you. Yep, Counselor Brown?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, so you haven't engineered all four phases?
There has been very, I'll call it schematic design done to make sure that it works.
Right.
Right? There's been modeling done with the county's consultants to make sure we have capacity, but detailed design has not started. And of course, this redline application will change some of that, but, yeah, very basic engineering at this stage.
So, when a report in the technical comments refers to reimbursable costs, we have no idea yet what's involved there?
Yes.
If, if, if any?
Right. So, on those reimbursable costs are mostly for works outside of the subdivision, not internal streets. These are, this is talking about works that are beyond that the county would like to have done, that are not really the developer's responsibility. You know, obviously, we're bringing a water main or a storm sewer, something that we need to service this development. That is the developer's cost, and that, and you'll see in those tables that that is 100% developer. But those reimbursable costs will depend on what you guys decide for development charges, as that's all outlined in the draft plan conditions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Any other questions for Mr. Valley? Seeing none.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this in chambers today? Anyone on the line who'd like to speak? Seeing no hands, I'll ask the committee to move the recommendation. Anybody interested? Counselor Columbus, second, or Counselor Van Andrishi? Councillor Columbus, seconded, councillor Vanadrisi, any more discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote, all those in favor? Thanks very much. We belong to our last report today, we have 4.4, we are bringing back Kendall Wharton, who is our planner, who will introduce the report, Kendall? Kendall just needs a moment.
Through the chair, this application seeks to add a special provision to the subject lands to permit a maximum usable floor area of 600, 600.5 square meters, for a structure accessory to a dwelling in the agricultural zone, to facilitate the future severance of a surplus farm dwelling with one of the existing barns. The subject lands are located at 310 10th Concession Road, within the geographic township of North Walsingham, the subject lands are approximately 73.6 hectares, and include a existing single detached dwelling, several farm buildings, including two barns and a greenhouse, and the greenhouse is intended for, to be demolished. The lands are zoned and designated as agricultural and hazard land, with the proposed severed lot and subject barn being located solely within the portion of the land zoned and designated as agricultural. As mentioned, the application seeks to add a special provision to permit an increased maximum usable floor area for structures accessory, accessory to a dwelling of 600.5 square meters, to facilitate the severance of the dwelling and one of the existing barns, as noted here. An onsite sewage evaluation has been provided, at this time, there are no major concerns identified through technical comments. The lands are currently in use for agriculture, and would remain as such, except for the proposed severance, severed lands, the proposed special provision would facilitate the severance of the dwelling, as surplus to the needs of agriculture, with the inclusion of the subject barn. In conclusion, this proposal seeks to add the special provision to the subject lands. Staff recommends that report CDS 25-021 be received for information, and that any comments be received, that are received be considered in a future recommendation staff report, thank you.
Thank you Kendall, are there any questions of committee for the, on the report? Okay, we have one deputation, for an encore performance, we have Scott Pelander. Welcome Scott, same deal, five minutes, I'll let you know when you have one left.
Thank you Mr. Chair, so Scott Pelander with G Douglas Valley, the, the agent acting on behalf of the applicant, we do have a presentation here, for 310 10th Concession Road, next slide please. Again, Scott Pelander, planner with G Douglas Valley, the applicant, Van Meere Farms, Greg Vermeer is here, present at the committee meeting today. Slide please. So again, planning staff did a, a good job providing the, the background, so it is a large farm parcel, is intending, Van Meere Farms is looking to do the surplus farm dwelling severance, and there is a, a former barn, we'll call it an accessory structure, on the property that's in close proximity to the house, and I'll, I'll get to that in some later slides, but the zoning bylaw is to permit that increased size, for now, a residential accessory structure that would go with the surplus farm dwelling severance, so it'd be the ZBA required to recognize the site-specific conditions, next slide please. So a severance sketch has been prepared, and you'll, if you'll notice here, the house and the barn are less than 30 feet apart, so the challenge becomes here, when we look at this, this is where planning policy and common sense kind of run head-on into each other, and, you know, this is where we need to take a look at those site-specific conditions of, you know, what, what's existing here, because the policy doesn't, you know, isn't overly permissive of these types of severances, and we've got a picture of the, the barn on the side there. Next slide please. So some of the context, so the PPS and the provincial policy statement do require the lot to be the minimum size necessary to support the residential use, but not at all costs, right, and there is some flexibility in the language of the policies, that allows us to come take a look at site-specific requirements, if this barn is located 100 feet away from the house, 200 feet away from the house, you know, it's pretty easy that, no, this doesn't meet the requirement, so that's where you start to then get to look at, to support the residential use, and a letter was submitted with our application from the owner, I don't know if the committee has seen it, that outlines clearly that this structure hasn't been used for residential purposes in over 20 years, and it's already belonging to the house, it's already being used for residential purposes, and again, if the barn is 100, 200 feet away from the house, you know, there's no real way around the policy, but then when we start to look at that common sense piece running into head-on with the, the planning policy, you know, that's where you can start to take a look at the, the nitty-gritty of the, the aspects here, so, on there, we, we say Norfolk County's approved similar applications in the past, that's not to say precedent-setting, we shouldn't reinforce bad, bad planning decisions with more bad planning decisions, but what that does allow you to understand is that there are situations where, you know, varying from the bylaw can happen, and that's the point of this application, is to come see that, seek that site-specific relief. As planning staff did talk about, again, the greenhouse would be demolished, and the driveway, there are two driveways on there, one would be relocated, relocated as a condition of severance. Next slide please. So again, the site-specific conditions, so the existing structure, as I said, hasn't been used for agricultural purposes in over 20 years, as part of our application, I just want to confirm that the committee did receive the letter and the pictures provided by the, the owner, it was part of our planning application. Okay, so the committee has had that, again, that proximity to the, the house and barn, so less than 30 feet, so trying to get a property line between the existing barn and the existing house, there's gonna be building code requirements, you get into access issues, and from a planning perspective, doesn't make sense to have a operational farm building 30 feet from a house on a completely separate lot, and so that's where we start to look at, again, those site-specific conditions, you know, from-
One minute.
Great, thank you Mr. Chair. When we look at keeping the barn with the farm, the, the farm has confirmed, they spend maybe 48 hours on this property, okay, modern farming equipment doesn't fit in that barn, it serves no purpose for the farm itself, so, you know, it would be looking at demolishing it, which then you go back to the, does it detract from the rural character of the area that you're, you're wanting to preserve, and then we talked about the sentimental and functional importance to the family, so that was reiterated in that letter, you know, how important it is to that family for the, the residential use. Next slide please. So we did, as part of the application, a planning justification report was submitted by our firm, that looked in detail about the applicable policy, and how it does conform to the provincial policy statement, it meets the intent of the Norfolk County official plan, because again, that planning language does provide some consideration for site-specific considerations like this, so upon approval, the zoning bylaw, which I will note, that we were only made aware yesterday, that is coming to council in your next session, which is in an hour, we were only made aware yesterday that this will be coming to council for a decision, so I would encourage questions to be asked, because we are not a deputation at your following council meeting, thank you Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and with that, we have our first question, councillor Vanadrisi.
Thank you Mr. Chair, and through you, thank you for the presentation, at the end of the day, I was out there yesterday, and you're absolutely correct, for the visual of it, you want to see that the barn goes with the house, because it just is that block, and I, and I like the look of it, and rurally speaking, when you're going down rural roads, it looks good, so I'm, totally in agreement with you, I, I don't want to see buildings that are still in great shape to be torn down, I just feel, now the greenhouse in front, totally agree, that's, the glass is out, everything's out, so it's just the frame, that's good, so I'm pleased with that, just a comment then, thank you.
Thank you councillor, any other comments, yeah, please.
I would just like to say thank you, you just gave my whole speech that I'd normally give at the committee of adjustment to allow this type of thing, so.
Maybe you can stay home from the next one then, correct? Any other questions or comments for the deputation? Okay, seeing none, can I have, okay, actually, yeah, I'll, you can sit down there, thanks. Thank you. Can I have a mover to accept the deputation, councillor Michelli, seconded by councillor Brunton, any additional discussion, seeing none, I'll call the vote, all those in favor? Thank you, it's carried, is there anyone in chambers who wishes to speak to this report? Anybody online who wishes to speak to the report? Okay, does someone wish to move the staff recommendation, councillor Vanadrisi, seconded by councillor Columbus, any discussion? See, oop, nope, seeing none, then I'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, thanks very much, motion's carried, and that wraps up our presentations for the day, so can I get a motion to adjourn, please, councillor Brunton, he's already out of his seat, seconded by councillor Michelli, all those in favor? Carried, see you in an hour. Oh, 15 minutes.
30 minutes.
30 minutes, we'll see you at some point soon.